Good morning and welcome to this formal meeting of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Rob Kendrick and I'm chairman of the committee. Welcome to all members and officers present today. The video feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the county council website, and I'd like to welcome members of the press and public who are watching our meeting online today. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I'd like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online and can be reported by the media. Welcome also to the following senior officers from Children's Services: Heather Sandy, Executive Director, Children's Services; Linda Dennett, Assistant Director, Children's Health and Commissioning; Martin Smith, Assistant Director, Children's Education; and Hannah Pendleton, Head of Service, Boston and South Holland, locality and matrix lead for early help. I'd like to begin with the usual health and safety announcement. There's no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through reception into the front car park. We'll then need to wait in the car park for further instructions. Before I go any further, I'd just like to welcome councillor Stephen Rowe, who's the executive support councillor this morning. I understand councillor Mrs Bradwell is unable to attend, so I'm glad to see that councillor Rowe is here with us. Can I remind everyone that they should ensure their mobiles and other electronic devices are on silent mode? And when invited to speak, can you please ensure you switch your microphone on? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and the press and public listening to our meeting online won't be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphones to be heard. And if you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and my vice chairman, councillor Robert Reed, will make a note. So without further delay, let's move on to the business on the agenda today. Item one is apologies for absent and replacement members. Jess, do we have any apologies?
Yes, thank you, chairman. We've received apologies from councillor William Gray, Paul Brewster, the church representative, executive councillor Mrs Bradwell, Joe Cavanagh, the assistant director for early help, and Tara Jones, the assistant director for children safeguarding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item two, which is declarations of members' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they need only declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest form. Do any members wish to declare an interest? No, we can then move on to item three, which is minutes of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee meeting held on the 18th of October 2024. And this is to approve and sign the minutes from the meeting of the committee held on the 18th of October as set out in pages five to 12 of your agenda packs as a correct record. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Seer and a second... Ah, councillor Briggs. We'll now vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against? No abstentions? No. Thank you, that's the minutes agreed, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item four on the agenda, which is announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and chief officers. Start off with my announcements. I attended the official opening of the newly built St Lawrence School in Horncastle on the 29th of October. And this newly built school is part of the council's £101 million capital investment into special school estate. And it's a very impressive setup. The new school has 17 classrooms, three of which are designed for pupils with profound and multiple learning disabilities. In addition, there's a new hall and studio allowing the school to offer rebound therapy and physical education. There's... This is complemented by spaces with soft play, sensory play, physiotherapy, life skills, social recreation and calming. Reorganised and improved outdoor play areas include a sensory garden, a horticulture area, formal and informal sport pitches and outdoor exercise equipment. Through these purpose-built spaces, the school will provide an enhanced and high-quality learning environment for children with special educational needs and disability. And one thing I'd like to add to that, actually, I was struck by the actual dedication of the staff there. They're really fantastic staff and it was a very impressive day and I'm glad I attended it. As we have a short agenda today, I'm not planning to have the usual comfort break, but obviously if things we find go on a bit, we will revert to having a comfort break. But we'll play it by ear this morning, if everyone's happy with that. If you'd like to move on to executive councillor announcements, councillor Rowe, do you have anything on behalf of Mrs Bradwell? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Mrs Bradwell and I attended the St Christopher School opening. My reports are nowhere near as thorough as yours. Basically, they've extended it and they've also upgraded some of the bits that are already there. Once again, a real impressive setup, which means that obviously our children can stay closer to home and get the education or the best education that we can give them. We also attended the children and adults conference in Liverpool along with Heather Sandy and two other officers. There was an excellent presentation which Heather was involved in, which I'll leave her to tell you about it if she wants to. But the thing that stuck in my head that cheered me up a bit and has been something that's been ongoing since I started and that was profiteering from children's homes. And the new leader of Ofsted said that the government is looking at stopping profiteering around children's homes. I'm hoping that that's also going to include profiteering around getting foster homes as well as children's homes. So that was the big bit that stuck with me. There was lots of other good things. There was listening to what children in care wanted, the questions they wanted to ask. It was a little bit gratifying in a way because I sat there and listened and I thought, actually, we do most of that. So that was quite nice. Anyway, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. It sounds very interesting and that leads me on to inviting Heather Sandy, Executive Director, Children's Services, to make any comments you wish to. I think you may have to, Heather, from what councillor Rowe has just said.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, it was a really good conference, a really positive conference. I think there was loads of fantastic ideas from authorities and then lots of updates because I think anyone who's listening to the news at the moment will see there are lots and lots of announcements every day and we'll be working our way through them and bringing a paper on the budget to the meeting in January. But I was part of a session, it was part of a session that was reflecting on the National Order Office report on special educational needs and disabilities. That report found that actually we've got significant spending nationally on special educational needs provision. And in terms of identifying value for money, that was challenging for the Order Office. So combined with the ISOS report, which I've referred you to before, and the LGA report, it's basically collecting... All three big reports have got some really clear themes around how do we support mainstream schools to be more inclusive? They will need more funding for that, they'll need more capacity. And how do we build up their provision so that parents can regain confidence in keeping their children in mainstream schools? So it was a really good debate and loads of questions afterwards and it was a pleasure to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds that Lincolnshire was once again represented at the top table, shall we say. I think it's great, great to hear that. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item five on this morning's agenda, which is Young Carer Scrutin Review: Draft Final Report and Recommendations from Scrutiny Panel A. This item, which can be found on pages 13 to 130 of your agenda pack, sets out the draft final report and recommendations from Scrutiny Panel A on the outcomes from its review of young carers. And just to recap on the actions required of us as a committee, we're required to consider approving the final draft report attached at appendix A as the final report on young carers for submission to the executive on the 7th of January 2025. And now the report will be introduced by Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer and Project Lead for Scrutiny Panel A. And I'd like to warmly welcome councillor Phil Dilks, Chairman of Scrutiny Panel A, who will be presenting the draft final report. And councillor Tracy Carter, is she with us? She's online, that's great. And councillor Tracy Carter, Vice Chairman of Scrutiny Panel A, who is attending via Teams as I see here. Hannah Pendleton, Head of Service, Boston and South Holland, locality and matrix lead for early help, will be providing with us an officer view on the report and recommendations. So without delay, it's over to you, Tracy.
Thank you, chairman. In November 2023, the Oversee Scrutiny Management Board agreed that Scrutiny Panel A should undertake a review of young carers to consider whether the balance of awareness raising both within the local authority and with partners and the communities is appropriate and whether service provision both face-to-face and virtual is accessible and relevant to those who need it most. Call for nominations was followed by the formation of a panel under the chairmanship of councillor Phil Dilks and vice-chairmanship of councillor Tracy Carter. The panel consisted of councillors Debbie Armiger, Noi Seer and Mark Whittington. The key lines of inquiry for scrutiny review, agreed by the panel and approved by the Oversee Scrutiny Management Board, were: one, following the increased identification of young carers since the COVID-19 pandemic, to consider ways in which the council could effectively support the needs of those new and old to the role of caring in Lincolnshire; two, to examine ways in which the council can develop further media coverage of the issues to ensure all young carers know where to access information and support for themselves and their families. The panel met on six occasions between March and October 2024. In addition, members of the panel attended seven meetings of the young carers locality groups to hear from the young carers about their experiences and conducted a targeted survey of council staff, schools and partner agencies to understand further about how to identify and support young carers and their families. There are 12 recommendations contained in the attached report for the executive's consideration. The committee has requested to consider the attached report, including the 12 recommendations, and approve the report for submitting to the executive on 7th of January 2025. The executive will be requested to receive the final report and make arrangements for responding to the report by 7th of March 2025. This is to comply with the legal requirement contained in the Local Government Act 2000, section 9 FE, requiring the executive to respond within two months. I would now like to hand over to councillor Phil Dilks, the Vice Chairman of the panel, to present the draft final report and the review's outcomes. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Dilks.
Thank you, Tracy. Good morning, chairman and good morning, members. And it's with huge pleasure that I attend your meeting today to present the draft final report from Scrutiny Panel A into the provision of that the county now offers young carers and our recommendations on what more we think could be done to support them. Can I just say that despite serving as an elected councillor for more than a quarter of a century, variously at parish district and county levels, I have to confess that before we started this work, this review, some eight months ago, I knew very little about the plight of our young carers. I knew nothing about how their young lives are affected and shaped by their experiences of being relied on to take care for a loved one, usually a relative within the home. So for me, and I know for the cross-party colleague members of the panel, who I can see around the room today, Noi, Mark, Debbie, and I know Trace is online, it really has been an invaluable education. Firstly, to learn that across our county, there are estimated 7,000, 7,000 young people, many children as young as five or six, looking after a parent, a brother or a sister, who for whatever reason may be struggling with a physical or a mental disability, perhaps even an addiction to drugs or alcohol. I won't forget meeting the young lad who told me... Forgive me. It's working. I won't forget meeting the young lad who told me he was often late for school because of caring duties at home, but he kept the reason secret from his mates because they wouldn't understand, he said. The same reason he wouldn't go to the lunchtime special meetings organised by his school to support young carers like him. And the same reason he couldn't have birthday parties at home or have sleepovers like other kids. Nor will I forget the academically gifted teenage young lady who told me she didn't think she'd be going to university, that the school had suggested, because she was needed at home to look after mum. I remember being very moved by her words. "My mum brought me into this world," she said. "She cared for me when I was a baby. Now it's my turn to look after her." I won't forget the carer, the young carer who simply said to me, "We just want someone to understand what we're going through." May I say, having said those words, this is not in any respect a damning report, far from it. Early on in our work, the panel quickly established that Lincolnshire Children's Services is well ahead of the curve with its support offer for young carers. And as a result of that, we've focused on how the county council could perhaps build on what is already a strong base. So I would particularly like to recognise the excellent support provided to the panel by Joe Cavanagh, our Assistant Director for Early Help, and her excellent team of officers for guiding the panel on what has been in education. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman councillor Tracy Carter, who's online, and panel members, Demi Armiger, Noel Seer and Mark Whittington, for their support who's here today and work throughout the review. Special thanks to Senior Scrutiny Officer Tracy Johnson, who introduced the report, who's done much of the legwork, chasing and research, supported by Jess Wossey Yates from our democratic service team. Thank you. But most important, on behalf of the panel, I'd like to place on record our heartfelt thanks to all the young carers and staff we were able to meet when we visited the regular young carers locality group meetings. The challenges facing children's services in addressing the identification of young carers and raising awareness of the support available were fully recognised by the panel. We're pleased to see that children's services consider potential adjustments it could make to improve its offer to young carers. And several work streams on that score are already progressing, we recognise. I hope our report and recommendations will lead to an improvement in the awareness of young carers and the support available to them. I commend to the committee as what I hope is a robust set of recommendations to enhance our support to young carers. We recognise that although the council provides a good level of support already, the amount of information for young carers and their families and professionals working with them, and we want to raise awareness about young carers and what support is available to them. And we feel that is often limited. Forgive me, sorry. We think there's a need to tackle the stigma for children and young people around being a young carer and to address misconceptions by some families about the actions that children's services may or will undertake if their child is identified as a young carer. There's some fear in that as to what might happen if they know what I'm doing to care for my loved one. The 12 recommendations in the report aim to improve internal service consistency across Lincolnshire and collaborate with the community of practice and partner agencies. Some of our recommendations focus on health and safeguarding partnerships for adults and young children and encouraging others, other agencies, to raise the profile of young carers. All our recommendations follow the themes of improving internal and external messaging to promote the county council's young carer offer. And they particularly aim to address the following areas for improvement. I won't go through them in huge detail, but firstly, addressing gaps in the current provision for young carers as and when they are identified. And when that happens, we think that they should be reviewed to see what can be improved there. Secondly, the need for challenge of the provision for young carers to help shape and improve the service moving forward. This is addressed through several of our recommendations and we propose the establishment of a young carers council. We want to see and we want to enhance staff awareness and knowledge of best practice from the wider sector in relation to the challenges and available support for young carers elsewhere. We could accomplish this by developing a wider community of practice through health and safeguarding partnerships. There's a need, we feel, to increase the identification of young carers and tackle the stigma and misconceptions about being identified as a young carer. And we think we can do that by improving awareness and training amongst partner agencies, developing promotional materials and communication strategy, as I say, through and establish a young carers council. We think we can improve the content on the county council's website and further utilisation of social media to enhance awareness of young carers and the support offer. Moving on, we think there is a need to raise awareness and improve the accessibility of information on partner agency websites too. And we've got several recommendations that go into detail on that. We think there could be a higher corporate profile and focus across the county. This would be addressed through the development of a communication strategy, county councillors sharing and promoting the young carers' offer with their constituents, and a key list of key people and services within the county for sharing information about young carers. Mr Chairman, I conclude by saying I trust you will agree with me that the vital work of our 7,000 young carers, the work that they do every day, is invaluable. It saves this council a fortune in providing other services perhaps later. And I hope you'd agree that they deserve, these young carers deserve to be recognised as the community champions that they are. May I commend this report to the committee? And I would now like to hand over, if I may, to Hannah. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. I just want to take a second to emphasise what an excellent learning opportunity it's been for us. We're very proud of the service that we offer to our young carers and through this process and the strong challenge that you've put across from the panel, I'm very confident that we will deliver an even better service to the young carers going forward. I'd like to acknowledge the advocacy and support our schools and colleges provide to this special group of young people. The relationships that they build enable us to understand these children as individuals and what they need to support them. I'm really looking forward to what next year brings and how these recommendations are going to enhance what we offer and especially how we'll be able to enable an even wider group of professionals to identify these children and take those first steps towards helping them. I'm particularly grateful to the panel and your willingness to understand these young carers and the time you all took to visit them in their localities and how passionately you've shared their views. And I am doubly grateful that all of you will continue to support and promote the needs of these young carers and for your encouragement for the rest of the elected members to do the same. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to add my thanks to councillor Dilks and his colleagues on the panel for all the work they've done. Reading the report, it was clearly evident a lot of research had gone into that. And I'd also like to thank Tracy Johnson and Jess Wossey Yates for her input as well because it wouldn't have happened without the support of our staff. I think it's a topic which was dear to my heart. I was really delighted when it was accepted for review. And I'm so grateful it's been done, having had a little contact with young carers in a previous life, shall I say. Before I invite speakers, would councillor Rowe, on behalf of councillor Mrs Bradwell, like to say anything?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend many of the sessions, but I'd just like to compliment the whole panel, officers and everybody for the work they did. I'd also like to compliment councillor Dilks. I thought it did a superb job and thank him for making sure that I was involved whilst I was there. So thank you very much and really was a super job. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much for that. Heather, did you wish to say anything?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to echo what Hannah said, really, that this has been a really good learning experience for us. It's really nice to get positive feedback, but it's also really nice to be challenged and pushed further. So we accept all of the recommendations and councillor Bradwell and I are already working to, with the team, to look at how everything is implemented and we'll be reviewing that regularly before we bring it back here, you know, to update you formally. But we're really grateful for the time and energy that's gone in to giving focus to this. Really important group of children and young people, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much. I think this has raised the profile of young carers. And as councillor Dilks said, I think perhaps a lot of us were unaware of the extent of young carers in the county. I think it was 7,000, as in the report, as councillor Dilks mentioned. And I think it's something that's unseen and I'm glad the profile's been raised. Would any members like to comment on this? Councillor Seer?
I would like to comment. Thank you for allowing me to be passive. I never know anything about it. I visited three events. One's a breakfast cook, one cooking class, one the day out. The youngest one, he was three-year-old, nearly five. One word, the little boy said to me, he said, "This is the best day out of my life." To the, you know, go out with the phone. They come from, I think, Holbeath and Stamford area. And the committee, you know, the people who organise it, you know, they wonder if the panel or the county council can support the day out for the children. Again, like, they say it'd be nice, you know, like a Halloween or Christmas event. Because when I first went to, you see, in Boston, cooking class, one boy walking and he was so quiet, he don't want to talk about anything because he feel. And the lady said, yeah, he because he happy too. He looked after his brother or something like that, but he was shy. Then to bake the eye, they would do cooking. And they say you got to separate it between yolk and white egg. How you do that? So the owner, I say, "Oh, it's okay, I show you." So that's the bake the eye and the kid start talking to you. And I was so, one girl, she 15-year-old and she said, "I don't know, we could take the cookie home for me dad because he don't eat, because he go out to work and I hope to look after me mum." I saw, what about you could have, you know, something on in Boston market, so maybe I go out today. And how sad it is, I even never know, we have this in our county. I please support them and please do something for these young people. And absolutely took my heart and I offered to one in Alfred, I said, "You need anything, let me know." I would bang their head to make sure you get there. Thank you very much. You know, it's 7,000 children and you never know. And some of them in my area, in Maborsor, Alfred and everywhere, I even never know that. Thank you for allowing me. You know, I dream of the chance to go out and try there to see them little fam because I'm the kind mother. She said, "Well, my God, I never know thing like this, but thank you. Please support them for the day out. Find some penny for them. Thank you."
Thanks councillor Seer for that heartfelt comment. I understand that councillor Tracy Carter wishes to make some comments, so it's over to you, Tracy.
Thank you very much, chairman. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I just particularly wanted to echo a lot of what councillor Dilks has already said. But I know people know that I'm sometimes quite challenging and robust in my questions. And I haven't had such a group of welcoming officers for that. The transparency, the honesty, the openness and the welcoming of challenge really was immense throughout all of this scrutiny panel, actually. So I think, yeah, absolutely hats off to all of the team and it shows their passion for actually what is a good service, but how they want to make it even better. So that really, really did stand out for me. I know the Holbeach Young Carers Group was incredibly welcoming of me and I know all of the other panel members that visited groups again had such positive experience from there. These recommendations, I think, I think all of the panel feel are very passionate about. We need to really try and break these myths and stigma around it as much as possible and I think these recommendations will help that. And I think the other thing that is very important is for, particularly for me, something I was banging the drum about is actually reaching people as early as possible. So that's so key and again, these recommendations will play that part. And finally, I think it's going to give even more strength to these young carers to realise how special they are, the amazing job that they do and the impact that they make for a lot of people's lives. And so absolutely, all of these recommendations, I think, really are from the heart. And it's great to hear that already they're being welcomed by Heather, Joe and all the team. So again, thank you and I certainly hope that they are supported. Thank you for letting me comment, chairman.
Thank you, Tracy. Not at all. It's great to hear your comments. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from other members? All content? I just wanted to raise one thing that crossed my mind when reading the report is how, what else can be done to improve the life chances of young carers? I noted in the report that there's a higher percentage of people who are missing out... who are missing out on education or not in education, training or work. And I hope that's something that's going to be emphasised in the report because their life chances are so important. And I think it's significant if we can do anything to improve their life chances because clearly they're dedicated to their caring at such a young age. And I think we wouldn't want them to miss out on the life chances that their peers will have at school. And I was struck by the comment that Councillor Dilks made by one, one young lad who spoke to, didn't want to let anyone know that he was a young carer. And I think that's something which obviously needs to be addressed, if it can be. Because obviously sometimes young people don't want to be singled out as different, do they, amongst their peers? So I think that's very significant. I just wondered if Tracy could explain to the committee the next steps after the executive has considered this final report?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So subject to approval today, the report will be submitted to the executive on the 7th of January. The executive will be asked to receive the report and delegate a response to the relevant executive councillor, so Councillor Mrs Bradwell. There's a legal obligation to reply, to respond to that within two months. So in the meantime, Councillor Bradwell will probably work with Heather and the officers in terms of looking at those recommendations, deciding what have accepted, what actions they'll take to implement them. And then a report will come back to this committee on the 7th of March. And that will be the response from the executive and the action plan setting out which recommendations have been accepted, what actions will be implemented to fulfil those recommendations and what the, who the lead officers are for each of those actions and the timescales for completion. Following the committee's consideration of that in March, the committee normally then monitors it on a six-monthly basis until they are happy that the recommendations have all been implemented or they're happy with, or they feel that there's no need to carry on implementing because they've become like business as usual. So yes, after March, it'll be a six-monthly basis in terms of monitoring updates coming back to this committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Tracy. Councillor Reed, I believe you have a question or comment to make?
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Councillor Noisier, for the suggestion. And I'm sure it's come from all the scrutiny panel as well, a recognition to sort of, not say just thank you, but something that actually makes an opportunity for them to have some enjoyment, perhaps for everything that they do for those that look after us. And I've also heard how officers support this. How's this, how can we implement this? Does it need some further thought or have you got an idea, Heather?
Thank you. Thanks, Councillor Reed. So I think you're referring to, I think Councillor and I were suggesting some funded activities. I will need to go away and have a look at that. We need to look at, you know, what commitment that would be and if that was an annual commitment, there's a process for that decision-making. It's not in these recommendations. But I hear what the, I think what the scrutiny committee are asking me to do is go away and look at what we can do and I'll certainly do that.
Thank you very much. That sounds great. Sorry, Councillor Reed.
So can we put that on the forward programme then? So we've got it well recorded and not to don't trust you, but it'd just be lovely to actually see it programmed as well, wouldn't it? Thank you very much.
I'm not sure that would normally come through scrutiny for a decision. So can I take that away and have a look? What I can promise to do is keep you updated. I don't think we'd want a full scrutiny paper on, on an activity at that level. But I will, I will make sure that we keep you updated as a committee.
That's great. Thanks very much for that. Oh, Tracy, you wish to come in?
Sorry, just response to Heather. What we could do with the monitoring updates in the report, elementary can maybe include some wording in there, so it could be covered that way.
That's brilliant. Thanks very much. Well, if we have no further comments or questions from members of the committee, I'd like to move to a proposal. And I propose that the committee approves the final draft, the draft final report, attached to appendix A, as the final report on young carers for submission to the executive on the 7th of January 2025. And I think we've made a number of comments which Tracy has noted, which is great. So can, can you please raise your hands if you agree with that proposal? Thank you very much. That's unanimously agreed. Thank you for that. And once again, thanks to the panel and Councillor Dilks and Tracy Carter for all the work that you've done. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item six on the agenda, which is service-level performance reporting against the success framework 2024-25, and it's for quarter two. This item, which can be found on pages 131 to 138 of the Agenda Pack, sets out in quarter two performance for the service-level performance measures in relation to, of course, children's services. And just a reminder on the actions required of us, we're required to review and comment on the children and young people's service-level performance for 2024-25, quarter two. And I'd like to invite Hannah Pendleton, Head of Service, Boston South Holland, locality and matrix leader early help, to present the report. So it's once again over to you, Hannah.
Thank you. As you will have seen through the report, the performance is very strong. In five out of the six measures, we're either exceeding or achieving our targets. The only, the only exception being children in care, which is a, we are very close to meeting our targets, just outside of that window of tolerance. But as you will have seen through the paperwork, even with this increase, our number in Lincolnshire remains significantly below the most recent published figures, regionally, nationally and from our statistical neighbours. So isn't exactly where we want it to be, but is comparatively still in a very strong position. And through the work that we're doing throughout the whole of children's services, we'll be moving closer to that target through the support in early help and all the innovations that Pathfinder has brought. I won't go into the whole of the report because I know that you all will have read it. So I'll ask if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Councillor Whittington?
Thanks, Mr Chairman, and thanks Hannah for presenting the report. It's around the measure that didn't meet its target, the children in care. And the number per 10,000. I mean, I think we're all aware that the activity around this, the number of young people coming into care is increasing. And it's sort of on an upward trajectory at the moment. Now, I don't normally sort of believe in moving a target because the activity is dictating it. But it almost seems to me that if we are in a situation where we know for, for a number of reasons, reasons that are not just affect Lincolnshire, but are felt nationally, the number of young people in care is, is increasing, it's still on an upward, upward trajectory. It's almost as if this measure will never meet its target because the basis upon which the original target was set is based on a set of circumstances that no longer exist. So I'm just wondering if, what, what the views of, of the officers around this are. It's not saying let's, let's amend the target, but it may be that if we do reach a new plateau where, you know, the situation has changed, maybe the target does need at some point in the future to, to be reviewed when we reach our new stable place. If we ever do reach a stable place, which again is a bit of a concern. Thank you.
Heather, did you wish to come in?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thanks, Councillor Whittington. I think, I think it's a really good question. I think in terms of reassuring generally, we audit regularly. I am assured that we are bringing the right children into care. So I'm assured that we are not bringing children into the care of the authority that we shouldn't be bringing in. We benchmark regionally and nationally well. I think we'd want a little bit of time with this target. We know that the number of children in care has a direct link to the number of placements and therefore a direct link to the, some of the significant budget pressures that we've got. Therefore, at the moment, I think it's something that we would want to be keeping an eye on. And I think I'm happy to go through the normal cycle and adjust at that point. We did do an adjustment with regard to the number of unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. Why that's important is because there is no threshold, there's no decision about bringing them into care or not. They, they come into care automatically, they're transferred directly into care. We're currently, and I was just looking at the statistics, we're currently at 91 unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. And we would have to have 147 before we'd met our quota on the National Transfer Scheme. So that will continue. They're definitely going to continue to come in on those cycles. I also think what having this focus does is it helps us to really look at what is happening. So some of the analysis that we're doing at the minute is telling us actually some children aren't exiting care at the rates that we've had previously. So that's allowing us to put the focus on whether there are children and young people who could have their care order discharged either because their family circumstances have changed or because there's another family member in their network and we could transfer it through to a special guardianship order. And we know, and you all know, Lincolnshire's a family-first authority. So we like to keep children with their families wherever we can. Where that's not possible, we'd like to place them with family networks where that's safe to do so. Where that's not possible, we'd like them in a foster home, so it's a family environment and so on and all of the way through. So it's making sure that we're continually working because sometimes family circumstances change regularly, change dramatically and we need to be reassessing and thinking about what does this mean? Because we know that very often children are best off with their families where we can make that safe. So I think it's a fair challenge. I think we'll, we'll go through the normal cycle if you're comfortable with that and the committee's comfortable with that because I think it's one we need to keep a sharp focus on. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Think, Councillor Cleaver, did you have a question?
Yep. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just looking at the report, it is intriguing that there is such a difference in our actual with that of the national figures, the regional and statistical neighbours. I mean, the difference between 54.9 and 71.69 and 69 is very statistically significant and very interesting. So I'm, as I always do in scrutiny committees, I'm always interested as to what the Lincolnshire angle is on this when we are so, so different from the rest of the, rest of the country or the rest of the region. So I'd be interested, Heather, to hear what, what the reason is. Thank you.
Heather, if you'd like to comment, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Councillor Cleaver. So we are an authority that invests really strongly in early intervention. So we have a really robust early help offer and have done for more than a decade now. I think it's probably coming on to two decades. So we intervene early, we intervene before crisis. We've also got partners across our early help network who intervene and intervene early. So nationally, there is a move through the announcements in the social care reforms to get all authorities to be intervening earlier. Because actually, if you can intervene early in a less statutory environment, then you can prevent that escalation and you can work with families early on and things haven't got to crisis point. So we try really hard to do that. So you'll see that through our child in need numbers, through our team around the child numbers. We're in and working with families in Lincolnshire. I think one of the other things is we're prepared to stay in for a while and sometimes we can be challenged about that from Ofsted. They can say you've been working with this family for two years. But yeah, we're prepared to be in for the long term because we know that bringing a child into care is a really significant incident in a child's life. So we work really hard to keep children with their, with their families wherever possible. I think, Councillor Cleaver, you're absolutely right to, to, to ask what the Lincolnshire angle is because one of the challenges, you could say, is, well, is it too low? And are we not bringing children into care that we should be bringing into care? And Ofsted tests that really well with us. Our quality and standards team tests that really well. We audit cases, we look at where we've made decisions to continue working with families. And I think what we're seeing is the outcomes for those children are better and those children don't end up in care. I think nationally, at a point where we've got a really significant financial pressure on councils, there is a risk nationally, and I don't, I don't think this is a risk in Lincolnshire, that councils will cut early intervention because it's not statutory, you don't have to do it. And I think the problem then is you'll have that flow through into your statutory work. I think nationally, the clear indication from the Department for Education and from the government is they want to invest in early intervention and prevention. So they announced a pot yesterday or the day before, which is a new pot which is designed to be focusing local authorities into the early intervention and prevention. This is a council that's invested in that area for a long time. And we're really quite sophisticated in it now. So we've got a variety of early intervention teams that are doing fantastic work with families. And families respond really well to that. They like to work with us outside of the statutory framework. We do use the statutory framework when we need to and when threshold is reached. And we do sadly have to bring some children into the care of the authority when that's what needs to happen. But that's, that's the Lincolnshire angle, as Councillor Cleaver called it.
Thanks very much. And it's heartening to hear how, how much work is going on in, in, in early intervention. As the old-fashioned saying goes, prevention is better than cure. And in some respects, that's what's happening here and I think that's great to hear. Do we have any further questions? Councillor Whittington?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me come back, Mr Chairman. I think, I think the point Heather's made is really, really important around early intervention. You know, it's, you know, as Heather says, we've been doing this in Lincolnshire in both children's and adult social care for an awful long time now. And it's interesting that when I go to meetings and speak to other county councillor colleagues, they're nowhere near as advanced as we are in, in a lot of county authorities around the work they do early on to prevent problems or to mitigate problems. And I think Heather's made a fair point. The danger is that they will. Because early intervention is not statutory, the very area they should be targeting their investment to, they won't, they'll be cutting. So I think Lincolnshire are really, are in a very, very good place. Yes, we have got cost pressures in the service. And yes, I did sit with, with the leader and some of the senior officers yesterday looking at the cost pressures we face. But we're in a lot better position regarding these cost pressures that are in the system than the vast majority of other local authorities out there. And it's testament to the work that we've done over the last, as Heather said, over the last 10 years plus. And in reality, the focus, the focus for the county council should be to be putting more money into early intervention in both adults and children's.
Thank you very much for that question. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Reed, did you say you had a question?
Well, I did have a question, but thanks to the answer that's been given by Heather Sandeep to Councillor Whittington with regard to the service level quarter two only being 61%. And she's clearly identified that it's way up 88, 90% now. So that's why my question has gone away.
You've been preempted there. Yeah, yeah. Thanks very much. Do we have any, any other questions or comments from members? If not, then I'll move on to a proposal. I propose that the committee has reviewed the report and is satisfied with the children and young people's service-level performance for 2024-25, quarter two, and various comments have been noted by Tracy. Can you please raise your hand if you agree with that proposal? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That's agreed. We now move on to item seven on our agenda, which is Children and Young People's Scrutiny Work Programme. And this item sets out the committee's work programme for 24-25. And it can be found on pages 139 to 144 of your Agenda Pack. And to recap on the actions required of us, we're required to firstly review and agree the committee's work programme as set out in the report and to highlight for discussion any additional scrutiny activity which could be considered for inclusion in the work programme. And so without delay, I'll hand over to Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, to present the report. Tracy?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I have no amendments to report to the work programme. There are two meetings left in this council term for the committee. The next meeting is on the 17th of January, where the committee will be considering the budget proposals for children's services for 2025-26. There's also a pre-decision item on the children and young people's youth housing service contract. And that will be considered by the executive on the 4th of February. There will be the usual annual report in relation to the attendance in schools, elective home education and children missing education for 2023-2024. And there's also a report on school emissions, which I think was requested by Councillor Cleaver at a previous meeting. And that'll just be an overview about the processes and sector. In relation to March, we currently have six items listed. First item will be receiving the executive response and action plan in relation to the young carers' scrutiny review. There will also be the school performance in Lincolnshire for 2023-24, the quarter three performance report, an update on the Family First for Children Power Finder programme. the quarter three performance report, an update on the family first for children Pathfinder programme as requested by the vice-chairman, an overview of key policies and projects by children's services for this council term. And at the moment, we also have a pre-decision report in relation to the Milvera House project. And that concludes my update. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from members? Or suggestions for items for consideration? No? Okay, I therefore propose that the work programme is agreed. Can you once again raise your hand if you agree with that proposal? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Well, that now concludes the formal business of the meeting. I'd like to thank you all for your attendance today, but not only just today, but throughout the past year. I think we've had a very positive set of meetings this year with a lot of engagement from members. It's made my, my life much easier having all the engagement and involvement of members. And I'd also like to thank all the officers for their support and input to the meetings. And I'd last like to finish by wishing you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.